Five to three fifty-nine, be rezoned from R two to R two dash twenty-five, also requiring a minimum construction setback of three meters from the crest of the slope and that the land is subject to a five percent parkland dedication fee.
Thank you. Has there been any opposition to this application?
There has been no opposition. There was a phone call from a gentleman in the area asking for more information and was satisfied when the information was provided.
Okay, and support for the application?
There is support this evening with the developers consultant, Brian Whitehead of JP Tucci and Paul LaVoix are here, I believe, to speak on behalf of the application.
All right, gentlemen, would you like to comment? Is it Mr. LaVoix?
If I may?
Yes, you may.
Mr. Mayor, I'm Brian Whitehead, JP Tucci, and I'm joined with Paul LaVoix. I don't know if Mr. Angler is with us this evening. Michael Angler is the owner of the property. And with permission, Paul has a brief presentation. If he could be allowed to have control, then he would. It's about a two to three minute presentation that he'd like to make.
That's fine. Yes, he may.
Okay, thank you, Brian, for the introduction. So I'll share my screen now. So the purpose of the presentation is essentially to provide context and help show some aerial photos and just briefly go over what's being requested here. So I'll share my screen now. Okay, so my name is Paul LaVoix, a planning technician with JP Tucci Consultants. I'm joined today by Brian Whitehead, and I thank you again for the introduction. So the development proposal involves a division of the subject property currently being displayed on your screens and shown in red into four parcels, so three severed and one retained, each to be developed with a semi-detached dwelling, total of eight dwelling units. Each dwelling unit is to include an attached garage will be designed to permit shared driveways, minimizing the number of driveway entrances onto Nelson Street. So this slide demonstrates the proposed lot layout and development setbacks for the three lots to be severed and the one to be retained. The three to be severed are shown in red, the one to be retained is shown in green. So the development proposal requires a site-specific modification to the residential two R two zone provisions specifically addressing provision for semi-detached dwelling units and to allow for the efficient use of the subject property. So as mentioned by Ms. Sorio, the property is currently vacant, but has been previously used as a parking lot. The property is mostly covered with gravel and is without any notable vegetation except for a modest tree line along the northern lot line of Butting the Algonquin Trail. The proposed use of the subject lands is a very good fit for the property based on the official plan policies. In short, these policies help to increase growth in a compact, energy-efficient manner while optimizing the use of available infrastructure, increasing density and promoting active transportation. This development proposal advances these official plan objectives as well as others as discussed in the planning report. So regarding this zoning bylaw amendment, the reductions in minimum lot area frontage are consistent with current development standards and are within eighty percent of current R two zoning standards, again as mentioned by Ms. Sorio. These are acceptable margins per the official plan. These exceptions will allow for efficient development in the form of infill, and the requested reduced rear yard setback and lot depth also reflect the fact that the individual lots will back on a public open space in the existing multi-use Algonquin Trail, providing an additional public amenity area for the development. So finally, the zoning amendment proposes to establish a site-specific residential two special exception zone, which should permit exceptions from the zone provisions for semi-detached dwellings where one dwelling unit occupies a lot and semi-detached dwellings where two units occupy a lot. This would ensure the zoning is in place for future severances if the client, Mr. Angler, decides to further sever the lots, creating one unit per lot and allowing the dwellings to be sold individually. Thank you for your time. If anyone has any questions or would like to discuss anything that's been presented, please let me know. And otherwise, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you for the presentation. I'd ask for a report from the Chair of the Planning Development Committee of Council regarding the planning advisory and adjustment committee comments for this application.
Thank you, Your Worship, the planning advisory and adjustment committee were pleased with this application. Any concerns had been looked after. The slope stability study completed, the construction setback. You know, we were all of the same opinion. There is not an overabundance of vacant land within the city for any type of redevelopment or development. So when you see a project like this with eight units for semi-detached, it's exciting. So we're definitely happy to approve this and send it along to council.
Thank you. Are there any questions from council? Counselor Jackenow.
Thank you, Your Worship, and Mr. LaVoix for the presentation. I agree wholeheartedly with Counselor Reeve that this will be a welcome addition to our community. I do have one question, however, in regards to the shared driveways, the anticipated removal of snow. Where would the snow go?
Through you. The snow would be on the sides of the property. There are some sections of grassed area that would be on either side of the shared driveway. That's where the snow would have to be going. And if it got too high, then the snow would have to be removed from the property. Then that would be at the property owner's expense.
Thank you. If you wish to be notified of council's decision, please contact Mrs. Sorio at City Hall. This meeting has been called to consider the application under the City of Pembroke Zoning Bylaw 2020 dash zero five to rezone the property as municipally known as one-one-one-six Pembroke Street West from a highway commercial thirty-four dash C two dash thirty-four, zoned to a highway commercial fourteen dash C two dash fourteen zone to allow the standard C two permitted uses in addition to a food vehicle use within sixty meters of a residential zone. Clerk, please report on how the notice was given.
Notice was given by mail to all owners of property within a one hundred and twenty meter radius of the subject land and was posted onsite on February third, 2021.
Mrs. Sorio, could you provide us with a report, please?
The proposed zoning bylaw amendment would change the zoning of the lands municipally known as one-one-one-six Pembroke Street West from a highway commercial dash thirty-four zone to a highway commercial dash fourteen zone. Presently, the C two dash thirty-four zone permits limited commercial uses at this property. This application is requesting additional permitted uses to include all of the uses permitted in a highway commercial zone. The applicant is having a hard time to rent this property, and he would like to expand the permitted uses. The size of the lot would limit and restrict the uses that could be accommodated on this property. The applicant is interested in also having a food vehicle on the property, and the C two zone permits a food vehicle. However, the new zoning bylaw does state that a food vehicle shall not be located closer than sixty meters to a residential zone. In this case, the property is located next to existing residential uses. Therefore, relief from this section of the zoning bylaw is needed. This sixty-meter separation distance was added in our new zoning bylaw, and this was added to give neighbors a say in this particular use in regards to order. However, no comments were received in this particular application. The official plan designates the property as highway commercial, which permits a variety of uses that are located on arterial or collector roads. The proposed business would be located on Pembroke Street West, which is an arterial road. The property is bounded to the north by institutional uses, which include Heritage Manor and the Sisters of St. Joseph's Convent. It's bounded to the west and south by residential uses and to the east by existing commercial use Perkins Gas Station. In regards to parking, the parking requirements are met because this property was originally built as a used car lot. So there are twelve parking spaces, and even if with the existing building and a food truck, the twelve parking spaces would be adequate to cover for both of these uses. The relief is required from the aisle width between parking spaces as well as interior side yard and rear yard depth. These setback deficiencies were approved in several rezonings that were had in two thousand and nine, two thousand and fifteen, as well as the original rezoning in nineteen ninety-three. The landscaped open space requirement of ten percent is met. There is a visual barrier that's located along the rear lot line and the western interior lot line, so the requirements for buffering are met. In regards to servicing, the property is serviced by City Water and City Sewer, and it meets the provincial policy statement because it promotes intensification and redevelopment, taking into account existing building stock. The planning department did recommend this to the planning advisory committee.
Thank you. Was there any opposition to the application?
There was no opposition to the application.
Support for the application?
The applicant, Mr. Lance Perkins, couldn't be here this evening, and so he is in support of the application.
Thank you. Chair of the Planning and Development Committee, please report for us. Counselor Reeve?
Thank you, Your Worship. Again, the committee was very happy with this. This property has seen a lot of different businesses through the years, and we wanted Mr. Perkins to have the ability to attract a broader range of tenants so that, you know, so that he can keep the property underway. I did have one question with regards to the parking, and that was if there would be a consideration for accessible parking, if that was a requirement, and because there is an abundance of parking, that won't be an issue. So again, committee was happy with the application.
Thank you. Any questions from council? Counselor Jackenow.
Thank you, Your Worship, through to the Chair. I would presume that then this would be just a pick-up-and-go type of operation? Or are they planning to have a little patio unit or some picnic tables? I have a concern about garbage if that is taking place, or is it simply pick-up-and-go?
Mrs. Sorio?
Through you. I am not sure if it's just takeout or if there will be picnic tables. However, if there are picnic tables, we'll have to monitor that closely to ensure that there is proper parking met, and we can monitor, you know, through site plan where the garbage receptacles will be located.
If you wish to be notified of council's decision, please contact Colleen Sorio at City Hall. Could I have a motion, please, to adjourn this public meeting, moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Plummer? All those in favor? We are now adjourned. Thank you. I'd like to call the Striking Committee of Tuesday, March the second, 2021, to order. Is there any disclosure of peculiar interest in general nature thereof? None. Could I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda? Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Reeve. All those in favor? Carried. Mrs. Olivera.
Thank you. So the recommendation this evening is to appoint Amy Bailey as the Algonquins of Pickwacknagans representative on the Diversity Advisory Committee. Public notice was circulated for individuals interested in applying to the Diversity Advisory Committee, and council appointed members to the committee on February second. At this time, an appointment recommendation had not yet been received by the Algonquins of Pickwacknagon regarding a position that was reserved for them on the Diversity Advisory Committee. By email on February eighteenth, Chief Wendy Jocko recommended the appointment of Amy Bailey to the Diversity Advisory Committee to represent the Algonquins of Pickwacknagon. Following this meeting, there will be a report before council regarding this.
Thank you. Any questions? Could I have a motion to adjourn, please? Moved by Counselor Plummer, seconded by Counselor LaFreniere. All those in favor? Carried. This striking committee is now adjourned. I'd like to call this Planning Development Committee meeting of Tuesday, March the second, 2021, to order. Is there any disclosure of peculiar interest in general nature thereof? None. Could I have a motion to approve the meeting agenda, please? Moved by Counselor Reeve, seconded by Counselor LaFreniere. All those in favor? Carried. Mrs. Olivera.
Thank you. So on February twenty-third, a community improvement panel meeting was held where all members were present. The panel reviewed four applications, and they are recommending three applications be approved under the Community Improvement Plan. The applications that they're recommending approval for are from David Minns of Dejardins Insurance at one-three-one-six Pembroke Street West for the COVID-19 Business Support Grant. The applicant installed clear plastic guards for employees and customers. The second application is from Janice Hunt of Finnegan's at nine-fifty-five Pembroke Street East for the COVID-19 Business Support Grant, and they installed a new patio, installed barriers on their existing patio, and installed clear plastic guards between indoor tables. The third application being recommended is from Dwight Montgomery of Dwight Montgomery Lawyer, located at two-twenty Pembroke Street East for the COVID-19 Business Support Grant. They plan on installing glass barriers and two air purifiers. The panel also reviewed an application from the owners of one-oh-eight Pembroke Street West for the Downtown Heritage Facade Improvement Grant, and due to the property standards orders against the property, the panel is not recommending the approval of the application. The panel has requested that the owners rectify the property standards order and then reapply to the Downtown Heritage Facade Improvement Grant. The COVID-19 Business Support Grant is intended to provide financial assistance to help businesses in adapting to the COVID-19 environment and adherence to public health and safety requirements. According to the Community Improvement Plan, there can be no outstanding work orders or taxes against properties applying. According to the Fire, Building and Treasury Department, there are no concerns regarding the properties being recommended this evening. Applications are now being accepted for the next round of grants under the Community Improvement Plan, and they are due on March twenty-fourth. In terms of financial implications, David Minns of Dejardins Insurance spent two thousand two hundred and five dollars on improvements, so they're eligible for a grant of one thousand one hundred and two dollars and fifty cents. Finnegan's spent twenty-six thousand nine hundred and thirty-eight dollars and fifty cents on their improvements, so they're eligible for the full grant of twenty-five hundred dollars. And Dwight Montgomery Lawyer spent one thousand fifty-nine dollars on their, or will spend that much on their improvements, so they're eligible for a grant of five hundred twenty-nine dollars and ninety-seven cents. Recommendations in the report total four thousand one hundred and thirty-two dollars and forty-seven cents. All of the grants would be coming out of the COVID-19 Business Support Grant budget, which has thirty thousand dollars of uncommitted funds that remain in that budget for this year.
Thank you. Comments, questions from council? Counselor Reeve?
Thank you, Worship. It's so excellent that we have these funds within our Community Improvement Plan to help businesses that have struggled long and hard now, well into over year. So I think it's been an excellent effort by the city to help them out with this.
Any other comments? Thank. Could I have a motion to adjourn this meeting, please? Moved by the Deputy Mayor, seconded by Counselor Plummer. All those in favor? We are now adjourned.
Right. Welcome, everyone, to the Finance and Men Committee meeting. First up is called to order, disclosure of peculiar interest. Seeing none, motion to approve the meeting agenda. Moved by Counselor Jackenow, seconded by Counselor Reeve. Those in favor? Approved. First up, Order of Business, Pembroke Fire Department Monthly Report, Chief Herbeck.
Good evening, everybody. Thanks for having me. This is our monthly report for the month of February, running from January twenty-seventh to February twenty-third. In our prevention and public education activities for the month, during January, there was internal fire drills being held at Riverview Heights, Marion Hill, and KI Pembroke. Internal fire drills are fire drills that they hold on their own. We consult with them in regards to that. We do not attend at those fire drills. Myself, I attended an online Zoom and web meetings with the Ontario Fire Marshal's Office, providing ministry and municipal updates. I also attended weekly virtual meetings for the 2021 OFM Mutual Aid Fire Coordinators Learning Symposium. This is an annual learning symposium for fire coordinators. As you know, I'm the coordinator for Renfrew County for our mutual aid, and I attend these meetings generally at the Ontario Fire College, but we've done it virtual this year. It was completely canceled last year. I also participated in the fire chiefs' interviews for the City of Pembroke. Our vulnerable occupancy inspections and drills for the month, there were no in- Our vulnerable occupancy inspections and drills for the month, there were no internal vulnerable occupancy fire drills or inspections during February. Our fire department continues to consult with the staff and monitor with these occupancies. I do expect that it's going to resume as normal at some point this year where we will be attending for our inspections, full inspections, and we will be attending for fire drills which simulate them working at their lowest staffing levels. Our Firefighters Association this month supported the coldest night of the year fundraiser for the Grind. Our EOC meeting room was used by the Operations Department for an asset management meeting. This room provided space required for document viewing and for social distancing. Our career firefighter training during the month of February focused on suppression, rescue, SCBA prevention, driver training, policies, procedures and operational guidelines. Volunteer training in February focused on personal protective equipment, inspection, care and use, SCBA and respiratory protection. Our inspections and consultations during the month, you'll notice that we had 94 total inspections and consultations. You'll see a high number in mercantile and or business and again, that is inspections and re-inspections and consultations mostly with restaurants. You'll see that we found only six violations during these inspections and consultations and we did find 12 that have been corrected since the last report. We did not review or approve any fire safety plans during this month. Our incidents for the month, it was low total, quite a ways below our normal responses in a month. We only responded to 20 emergency responses, excuse me. We did do five medical assists. Again, of interest is if these medical assists are at no extra cost with no extra manpower being called in. We do that on regular duty without extra help. And we had zero losses due to fire during the month. And our false alarms for the month, you'll see that we issued three letters of warning. We did not issue any fines. We had no fines paid, no fines canceled, and there are zero fines outstanding.
Thank you, chief. Are there any questions to the chief about this month's report? Seeing none, thank you for the report.
Thank you.
Next up, Renfrew Area Administration Group Credit Interest Application Agreement, Ms. Lochte.
Thank you and good evening. The city of Pembroke is a member of the Renfrew Area Administration Group. Through this group, the city acquires banking services currently with the Bank of Montreal. The city's current banking arrangement stipulates one interest rate earned on general balances held by each member and a slightly higher rate on interest earned when members borrow from one another. The Bank of Montreal will no longer be able to support this internal borrowing function and will instead provide the preferential interest rate for all bank balances of the city. It is estimated that the city will earn about $14,000 more per year in bank interest under this revised arrangement. However, a new credit interest application and agreement will require adoption to support this change. So this report is for information purposes only as a bylaw follows later on tonight in council's agenda package. Thank you.
Are there any questions to the treasurer about this? Seeing none, moving on. Next.
So my second report is on the delegation of authority under the Municipal Act 2001 for a tax relief application for sickness or extreme poverty to the Assessment Review Board. So currently subsection 357, 1D, point 1 of the Municipal Act allows a municipality to cancel, reduce or refund property taxes due to sickness or extreme poverty. These types of applications are rare because it is difficult to substantiate a claim under this section while the owner has equity in a property, but these applications can sometimes occur. When they do, these claims are heavily administrative in nature and require the applicant to disclose significant personal health and/or financial information. As a result, city staff have concerns over evaluating these types of claims and what many municipalities do across Ontario is to delegate authority over these claims to the Assessment Review Board. So the Assessment Review Board or ARB has been handling these types of applications for a number of years. They provide an independent adjudicative tribunal that can provide a consistent approach through an independent body that has experience in these types of appeals. It is important to note that any delegation to the ARB is not permanent and this can be repealed at any time in the future by council. As well, through this delegation, applicants would not be subject to extra fees. While the city does not have any applications of this type pending right now, delegation to the ARB is recommended as a proactive measure. This report is for information purposes with a bylaw following later on in tonight's council package. Thank you.
Are there any questions to treasurer about this topic? Seeing none, then our next topic would be allocation of modernization fund reserve. Ms. Lochte.
Thank you. So during budget 2021 deliberations, proposed uses of the current modernization funding were presented. So this allocation requires formal adoption by council to facilitate future funding requests. Funding allocation amounts between the different projects have been updated to reflect current best estimates with $72,000 earmarked for the airport fuel tanks, $25,000 earmarked in 2021 for an organizational structure review of the operations departments, $425,000 for the city's long-term IT plan, which would support automation of priorities, which would include asset management, multi-year budgeting, payroll, HR, purchasing, recreation booking, accessibility, council agenda and meeting management, as well as citizen engagement, and $203,000 for a records or document management system and associated digitization of permanent city records for a total of $725,000. Again, this report is for information with a resolution following later on in tonight's agenda. Thank you.
Are there any questions to treasurer about that topic? Seeing none. Moving on. Next up is buyout of one previously leased by law enforcement vehicle, Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The operations department recommends committee approve the buyout of one previously leased 2016 Chevy Cruze vehicle at the cost of $6,426 plus applicable HST to be funded from the fleet reserve. The vehicle is one of two previously leased by the city's by law enforcement services for a five-year period from 2016 through 2021. The lease expired January of this year. The leased vehicles have been well maintained and taken care of. However, there is some cosmetic issues that would be typical in a five-year-old vehicle. The city now has the option to return the vehicle to Butler Chevrolet Pontiac Buick and pay for body repairs at a cost of $3,137.16 plus HST, or the other option to buy out the vehicle for its residual value of $6,426 plus HST. The car has only 36,588 kilometers on it and it is in good condition. If approved, the vehicle will become part of the operations department fleet and used by the capital works section for the supervisor, the engineering student and by the asset management coordinator. It can also be used by others within the department, especially in the need for travel, for training when that comes available in the future. It is not intended that this vehicle would constitute a permanent addition to the city's fleet and it will not be added to the fleet replacement schedule. The financial implication has a net impact of $3,346.72. The fleet reserve has sufficient funds to cover the buyout. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In light of the facts that are being presented by Mr. Lewis, it just makes abundant sense to proceed as recommended and accordingly. I would move that we proceed to buy out the 2016 Chevrolet Cruze. The cost stated in the recommendation to be funded from the fleet reserve.
Councillor LaFreniere.
I would just like to second that motion.
Okay. So we have a motion on the floor in a second. Is there any further questions or comments? Seeing none, then called a question, those in favor? Approved. Next up is the Nelson Street Reconstruction Traffic Control, two-way traffic on Peter Street and parking. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The operations department recommends committee approve temporary two-way traffic on Peter Street and parking restriction modifications on area side streets during the construction of the Nelson Street Phase One project, that being Maple Avenue to Cecilia Street. Phase One of Nelson Street is expected to go to construction in May of this year and is scheduled to be completed by the end of August. The contract is going to tender next week. Once we have the successful contractor, we will work together along with the contract administrator to develop a traffic management plan to reduce the inconvenience to the area residents. Considerations will include parking passes for residents in the area for side streets and the potential use of area parking lots. To help facilitate the movement of traffic for vehicles on Peter Street and for potential detour routes, Peter Street from Pembroke Street East to Nelson Street will need to be temporarily opened to two-way traffic as well as changed to a new park, excuse me, a no parking area to allow for this. Once construction for this year is complete, Peter Street will revert back to one-way traffic and the on-street parking will be reinstated. So similar to what was done back in 2011 during the Cecilia Street reconstruction, parking passes can be provided to those affected on Nelson Street to allow for parking on the side streets, for example, Maple Avenue and William Street. There is no financial implications associated with this report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Comments, motions from council? Councillor LaFreniere.
I would move that we approve the recommendation for the temporary two-way traffic on Peter Street as well as the restriction modifications as they pertain to parking. And just as a comment, yeah, that was my only concern when I saw this was the parking on Peter Street because it would be too narrow to be, you know, a two-way traffic if they didn't modify the parking arrangements. Thank you.
And councillor Reevie.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll second that motion, but I do have a question for Mr. Lewis. With the two-way traffic on Peter and I guess vehicles traveling southward, if they were to want to turn left onto Pembroke Street, I'm thinking traffic's a little bit busier now in 2021 than it was in 2011. Do you foresee any issues with a backup on Peter Street with somebody waiting to get out onto Pembroke Street heading east?
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, there will be some backup of traffic. That left-hand turn would be difficult as well as left-hand turns on some of the other areas, Catherine, Elizabeth Street, those areas find the same difficulties getting onto Pembroke Street. We'll monitor the traffic volumes. We'll monitor how traffic is backing up throughout the entire construction period and make changes as necessary.
Thank you.
Any other further comments before called a question? Seeing none. Called a question, those in favor? Approved. Next up is the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. Mr. Lewis.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. The operations department is seeking direction from committee on the submission of an application for the Canada Healthy Communities Initiative. The CHCI is a $31 million investment from the government of Canada to help fund small-scale infrastructure projects with the goal of providing safer and more vibrant communities. The focus of the program is on adapting to the impacts caused by COVID-19 and discovering ways to keep residents healthy, safe, create pandemic resilient communities, as well as to promote economic recovery. First round of funding closes on March 9th with the second round of funding anticipated for later in 2021. The following three themes are part of the program: safe and vibrant public spaces, improved mobility options and digital solutions. The minimum funding amount is $5,000 with a maximum amount for the program share of $250,000 and completion of the project must be done before June 30th of 2022. In discussions with CHCI staff, the intent is for full project funding. However, some projects may be only partially funded. We don't have a firm answer on that and the program originators don't have a firm number on that until they see the applications that have been submitted. Staff have reviewed the program guidelines, the existing multi-year capital construction forecast and the asset management plan, as well as considered what projects are best suited to meet the timelines. And the following eligible projects have been identified. Project A, Coronation Park redesign, cost ranging between $235,000 and $290,000. And I have provided drawing with the package, committee's package, as well as some renderings of potential stair entrances. The project includes the construction of a pathway through the park, excuse me, a pathway through the park to the access ramp on Lake Street, the replacement of the old access stairs adjacent to the Pembroke Street Bridge with new stairs incorporating landscape elements. The existing stairs are in need of replacement, the installation of pedestrian lighting, benches, picnic tables, bike racks and a landscaped feature with seating. The project meets the program's intent by providing safe area for park visitors to walk, enjoy the outdoors, enjoy a takeout meal from one of the many restaurants in the downtown core, appreciate the scenery, et cetera. Project B is Shamrock Park redesign, cost ranging between $50,000 and $75,000. This project includes the construction of a universal accessible pathway from the existing sidewalk in the park to seating areas. The installation of pedestrian lighting, benches, picnic tables would also be included in the design. City staff of various departments, including Parks and Recreation, Operations, Economic Development, Culture and Tourism and the CAO have met to discuss various projects related to public spaces and vibrant community initiatives and the consensus was the Coronation Park project as it best fits the intent of the funding opportunity, best utilizes the anticipated available funds. Additionally, the city has concept plans for the project in hand to include with the application and to help fast-track design and construction. There are no financial implications at this time. However, the city may be responsible for funding a percentage of the cost depending on the outcome of the grant application. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yeah, I had councillor Reevie first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, I would make a motion that we apply for funding for Project A, the Coronation Park redesign, but I also have a question for Mr. Lewis because I'm not seeing it really clearly on the plan that you provided to us now and it deals with accessibility within the park. The current pathway closest to Nelson and Lake Street, is that an accessible ramp that takes, you know, a person in a wheelchair or another mobilized scooter? Can they go get up to the parking lot the way it is or is that part of the new design? It just wasn't clear to me on this.
Through you, Mr. Chair. The existing ramp that leads from what we call the entrance or the pedestrian entrance to the park is universally accessible. It leads up to the entrance at the sidewalk on Lake Street.
Okay.
Unfortunately, at this point in time, it just ends in the park at a grassed area which isn't necessarily good for wheelchairs or those with mobility issues. That will be corrected with the new path.
Sweet. So will that, when you submit this application, will that be noted? Because I would think that that would be helpful in the application.
Through you, Mr. Chair, yes, it will be noted as well. You'll, excuse me, you'll note in my report that I talk about picnic areas, benches and those type of things. They're not shown in the, excuse me, in the original concept, but they will be in uh, but they will be included and we will be discussing those in the application.
Great. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, so I would second the motion that councillor Reevee put on the floor for a number of different reasons. The first one, as Mr Lewis has already said, uh, it's the, the biggest bang for your buck in reference to this particular grant. Uh, the second one, uh, is to remind committee that a number of years ago, we were redoing, uh, renovating, if you will, uh, the Main Street Bridge and to, we had to hone in the budget. Uh, we were gonna be over budget and unfortunately, uh, the staircase going down to, uh, the park and so forth was, uh, one of the cost-cutting measures. So it's nice to finally, uh, uh, put forward something and see if we can secure some funds that might, uh, put, uh, uh, might complete that particular project. Uh, and I'm sure like the, the motion is simply to put forward the submission of an application. Uh, and I'm sure that if we were granted certain funds, we will be back here evaluating what funds are available. But seeing as it doesn't have to be completed until June 2022, I'm sure that going through the next budget cycle, we can secure some funds to, uh, to come up with our portion of it. So for all those reasons, I second that particular motion.
Councillor Jacknow?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, Coronation Park has some, uh, a great deal of historic value for the city of Pembroke. Uh, the light standards that were there go back to the turn of the century. I can't recall if they're still there. They had a round globe and a large, uh, sort of Eiffel Tower-shaped, uh, standard that held them up. Uh, are those, are those light standards still there? And is there any, uh, any cost to retaining that historical look uh, within the grant structure?
Through you, Mr Chair. The light standards you refer to councillor Jacknow are still in the park. It would be our intent to try and maintain those. Uh, whether we maintain them in their existing location or we would, uh, would move them to other locations within the park, but it is our intent to try and keep those there. We may change out the, the lighting fixture if we can to go to an LED-type lighting fixture just for energy efficiency and so forth. But it definitely is our intent to continue with that historic lighting.
And I did see councillor Lefrenier's hand up earlier. Would you like to comment?
Just want to compliment, uh, the, the artist. Like, I think that would look fantastic. And as Deputy Mayor said, um, this has been on the budget before for different reasons, as part of the bridge reconstruction. But prior to that, I know there was money in the budget, but it just, it ended up getting cut. So even if we aren't successful, I mean, I think it is something we should think about doing in the near future. I know we always get to budgets and things have to be cut out of the budget, but that park, um, is underused and I think it is because of the stairs that are there now. Thank you.
Any other further comments before call to question? Okay, so those in favor of, uh, option or Project A? Approved unanimously. Thank you. Next up is the Municipal Modernization Program Intake Two Implementation Stream. Mr Lewis?
Thank you, Mr Chair. The operations department is seeking direction from committee on the submission of an application to the Municipal Modernization Program Intake Two Implementation Stream. If direction is received, resolution will be before council this evening so that it can be included in support of the application. Ontario's Municipal Modernization Program, MMP, is part of the Ontario Government's $125 million investment through 2022-23 to help small and rural municipalities become more efficient and save taxpayer dollars. In 2019, the city received funding under Intake One where a modernization and service delivery review was completed for the operations department. Intake Two is now open, accepting applications. Having already been successful in the review stream of the program, the operations department wishes to move forward with implementation of the recommendations in the review. Cost sharing for municipalities with fewer than 5,000 households is a maximum of 75% with the province's share expected between $20,000 and $250,000. Projects must be completed by September 30th of 2022. Numerous reports to the provincial government must be provided following the implementation project to forecast efficiencies and effectiveness and to provide actual cost savings. Eligible projects include digital modernization, service integration, et cetera, and must not include a reduction in frontline services or does, or a project that does not result in increased efficiencies or cost savings. The municipality must be prepared to support ongoing maintenance costs, for example, IT licensing, hardware upgrades, et cetera. In review of the completed service delivery and modernization review, the following projects would be part of the application under the implementation stream. A common notification system for the department, implementation of a work order system, SCADA upgrades, including the purchase of necessary hardware for the treatment plants, fleet and patrol methodology review, and the applicable software, implementation of GPS software for fleet activity and tracking. Staff anticipates a total project value will be in the order of magnitude of $260,000. There's no financial implication at this time. However, if the application is successful, the city will be responsible to fund 25%, which represents approximately $65,000. In discussions with the treasurer, the city's portion of the funding, uh, required funding uh, could be done out of the 2020 surplus. That surplus is presently calculated at $230,000. Thank you, Mr Chair.
Questions, comments? Motions? Councillor Jacknow? Your mic, Mr Jack, uh, councillor Jacknow?
Sorry, I move, Mr Chair, that we proceed with the, uh, the presentation as outlined by Mr Lewis.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor. Mr Mayor? Mayor seconds. Any further comments or questions? Seeing none, then call to question those in favor? Approved. That's it for Mr Lewis tonight. Next up is councillor remuneration. Mr Lapierre?
Thank you, Mr Chair. Uh, this matter has been raised previously and as a result, staff is looking for direction. Is staff to be directed to initiate a council remuneration review at this time? And if so, is this to be directed by staff with recommendations coming back? Or is an arms-length citizens committee to be established to report back to council? And what would the timing of implementation of any approved changes be? With respect to a background, uh, in 2013, a similar study was conducted. It was done so by a citizens committee appointed by council. And at that time, it was recommended that no specific increases in remuneration or benefits be considered. It was also recommended that council reduce its complement from eight members and the mayor to six members and the mayor. Council did adopt this recommendation as well as the recommendation that council members receive annual cost of living allowance increases based on the average of the annual Ontario Consumer Price Index and the city of Pembroke non-union staff cost of living adjustments awarded by council from time to time. With respect to financial implications, this would be wholly dependent on the direction of committee and then council.
Putting it to council, the questions, comments? Councillor Jacknow?
Mr Chair, through you and to other members of council and of course his worship. I think there should be a review. Uh, 2013 with the reduction in the number of individuals around the council table, that in my estimation did not decrease the workload. In fact, I think the workload in so many instances has increased. Many members of council sit on advisory committees where there is no, uh, you know, committee remuneration. And I think, uh, in all essence, uh, it should be looked at. And I don't think any council is here just for the money. I mean, if you were, you could be in private industry. Uh, I think we're here to help our community and the remuneration is basically, uh, you know, I think is just a reward for showing up and doing your duty. Uh, but in all instances, I think it should be reviewed, uh, whether it's a panel or not, uh, staff or an independent panel. I mean, that's, that's up to, up to, up to council to decide. But I, I really feel 2013 is a long time. Uh, anybody who works in industry has people working for them. You know, if you had, didn't give anybody a bit of a bump up in nine or 10 years, you wouldn't have a company. Thank you.
So councillor Lefrenier, did you have a hand up earlier?
Um, yeah, I did. I was just looking at the timing of this. Um, there's an election a year from this fall, so just a little over 18 months, I guess. Um, so I, I don't know that it should be done at this time. Um, I just want it noted that when it was reduced, I was around the table. When it was reduced to six members, uh, I was not in support of that because I was quite aware of the, the number of committees, uh, and that it would put a strain on the remaining six. Uh, not to mention, it kind of reduces the chances of getting people that are still working. Um, and what happens is then the people that aren't, uh, working full-time have to make up the, the difference with the committees. And I do, I do understand that some committees were eliminated from having council representation because of the workload, but I'm just wondering if it shouldn't wait, um, till after the, the next election. Uh, that's just my opinion though. Um, I guess, and when it comes to the makeup of the committee, um, I really think it should almost have past councillors, um, people that were sitting on council at one time or former mayors that really understand the workings of the city. Um, other councils may not have the same type of responsibilities as Pembroke councillors. I'm not blowing our whistles. I mean, we all are accountable to the public, so everyone has that type of pressure. But the city is an independent, um, entity. It's a single-tier municipality. We have all our own things to deal with. Uh, some of the smaller municipalities that we're surrounded by rely on the county for a lot of the decisions. So I think that only really councillors for the city would understand the type of workload that, that some of us have. Anyway, those are just my opinions, but I welcome the rest of council's ideas on this topic.
Councillor Reevee?
Thank you, Mr Chair. I don't see it the harm. Um, having a look at the remuneration, um, it has been quite some time. There has been a fairly significant change in the federal government's taxation of our remuneration. Um, that definitely would be a factor and a reason for wanting to look at this. I would be interesting, interested in seeing comparisons to neighboring municipalities. I'm sure that would be a, a part of the review. And if we were to undertake this, I would, um, prefer it to be at an arms-length, uh, panel to do that. Um, I believe it was two years, maybe three years ago that we did discuss doing this and, uh, and this was going to, um, be the way we would go. Uh, I recall that because, uh, former councillor Scott was very interested in being a member there, so. Those would be, those are my thoughts on the issue.
Mr Mayor?
I guess my comments are that, uh, when we ran for council in the last election, we knew what our, our, uh, remuneration would be and the fact also that, that it is increased every year based on the annual consumer price index. And granted, it's not that high, but it has been increased. If council decides to go, uh, I understand, I think a review, um, definitely, you know, should take place, but I'd like to see it done to begin with at the staff level. But definitely, uh, not take effect until after, as councillor Lefrenier said, until after the next election. Thank you.
Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, Mr Chair. So, yes, I was one of the individuals around the table the last time it was looked at. I was one of the proponents to having a review because, uh, there was other councils of the day that was able to get by with the complement that we have now. Uh, the review was done by a number of individuals, not by the current council, not by the council that was sitting of the day. Uh, and they came back and came up with the same concept. Uh, I also recall them saying that, uh, perhaps maybe councillors should not be on as many different, uh, committees, meaning presently, for instance, we have representation on whether it be Heritage Mural, the Pembroke Handybus and so forth. That particular part of, uh, of what the recommendations, uh, consisted of didn't really get acted upon. I concur with what the, his worship is saying is two, two different things is, number one, if, if the, if the committee is actually going to want to do a review, uh, that it doesn't take effect until next, uh, next term so that at least, uh, individuals know what they're getting into in terms of, uh, running. If you ever know totally what you're getting into when you run on council. But I, I also concur with what councillor Jacknow was saying. We're not here to, uh, to earn significant dollars or anything like that. We're doing this to, uh, to assist our particular, uh, community. Um, so, and, uh, finally to say that if, uh, the committee was to indicate that there should be a review of it, I agree that there should be some, uh, former, uh, council representation on it, not current councillor representation, uh, so that they can provide, uh, some insight, uh, as to, uh, what's involved, uh, in terms of, uh, and together with staff doing research to try and figure out what other, uh, committee members are doing. But in, in short, I, I'm, I'm not in favor of reviewing it. I, I think it is what it is. There is a cost of living increase, but if, uh, if, uh, outvoted, uh, and if that's the direction that it's going to be reviewed, those would be the things that I would want to see is not until next term and then some representation on whatever this committee is uh, from a previous council member so that, uh, there's some insight there that, uh, is grounded in what happens at council.
Councillor Jacknow?
Mr Chair, I fail to see the reasoning for the hesitancy. It seems that every time we talk about it, everybody says, well, let's wait till the next election. Uh, I mean, we're sort of midway through the term. Uh, let's make an executive decision, take a look at it now and, uh, do our due diligence or, I mean, if, if it's going to be approved, fine. If not, that's fine too. But I mean, keeping, keeping it on deferring it never gets us to, uh, you know, to address the issue. That's my feeling.
All right, then I would pose it out to council then. If someone wants to make a motion to, for us to vote on something, to do a review, not to do a review, or to use councillor Jacknow?
Mr Chair, I would make a motion that, uh, the review be done, uh, within this year and brought back to council, whether it's, uh, with staffing as a resource people. And if need be, an independent committee. Uh, but I'd like to see it done this year so that the next council, whoever it is coming in, is aware of what, what's going to be happening. That is the motion.
Okay. Would another councillor like to second that? Councillor Reevee? Okay. Further comments? Questions? Okay, call to question those in favor of doing a remuneration review? Okay, three, two, and those opposed? All right, motion fails. Motion fails.
I'd like to call this council meeting of Tuesday, the March 2nd, 2021, to order. I'd ask you to please bow your heads, and before opening this meeting of council, I'd ask those who wish, each in your own way, each in your own words, aloud or silently join in a prayer of guidance over these proceedings. Thank you. Is there any disclosure proving your interest and general nature thereof? None? Could I have a motion to approve the minutes from our regular council meeting, held on February 10th, 2021? Moved by councillor Reeve, seconded by councillor Plummer. All those in favor? Carried. Adopting the minutes from the operation committee, which was held on February 16th, 2021? Moved by councillor Lefrenier, seconded by the deputy mayor. All those in favor? Carried. Receiving the minutes from the Friends of the Disabled, which was held on February 13th, 2020, and the Pembroke Public Library, which was held on January 21st, 2021? Moved by councillor Plummer, seconded by councillor Reeve. All those in favor? Carried. Staff reports, the striking committee report?
Point of order. I believe you forgot the minutes of the operation. Aye, aye.
Thank you. Could I have a motion to approve the operation committee meeting minutes of February 16th, 2021? Moved by councillor Plummer, seconded by deputy mayor. All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. The striking committee report. Deputy Mayor Girvey?
Thank you, your worship. Your striking committee of council begs to report and recommend from its meeting held this evening as follows. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jackano, that Amy Bailey be appointed to the Pembroke Diversity Advisory Committee to the end of the current term of council.
Thank you. As we did at the last meeting, I will not be repeating the various motions that are coming forward, including the bylaws. So, any comments? No comments. All those in favor? Carried. Bylaws, the 2021-16. Councillor Plummer?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Lefrenier, that bylaw 2021-16, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into a letter of agreement between Her Majesty, the Queen, and the right of the province of Ontario, represented by the Ministry of Transportation and the City of Pembroke, on behalf of the City of Pembroke and the township of Lanchman Valley, to receive funding provided under a dedicated gas tax fund for the public transportation program, be adopted and passed. And further, that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Resolution 2021-004. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by deputy mayor Girvey. That bylaw 2021-17, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 345 to 359 Nelson Street, be adopted and passed. And further, that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Bylaw 2021-18. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jackano, that bylaw 2021-18, a bylaw to authorize the amendment of zoning bylaw 2020-05 regarding 1116 Pembroke Street West, be adopted and passed. And further, that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Bylaw 2021-19. Councillor Plummer?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Reeve, that bylaw 2021-19, being a bylaw to authorize the entering into credit, interest application, and agreement between the Bank of Montreal and Rensfield County Administration Group, of which the City of Pembroke is a member, be adopted and passed. And further, that said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk, and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Any comments from council? All those in favor? Carried. Bylaw 2021-20. Councillor Jackano?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, and seconded by my colleague councillor Reeve, that bylaw 2021-20, being a bylaw to authorize the assessment review board to exercise certain powers and functions of council pursuant to the Municipal Act, be adopted and passed. And further, that the said bylaw be signed by his worship, the mayor and the clerk, and sealed with the seal of the corporation, waiting your signature.
Any comments from council? None? All those in favor of the motion? Carried. Thank you. Motions. Resolution 2021-003. Councillor Lefrenier?
Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jackano, whereas the City of Pembroke received $725,000 in modernization funding, whereas council of the corporation of the City of Pembroke deems it expedient to formally allocate this funding to specific projects, now therefore be it resolved that the council of the corporation of the City of Pembroke resolves to allocate the modernization funding as follows. $72,000 for the City of Pembroke's share of new fuel tanks at the Pembroke area airport. $25,000 for an organizational structure review of the operations department. $425,000 for the implementation of the city's long-term IT plan, projects including asset management, multi-year budgeting, payroll, HR, purchasing, recreation booking, accessibility, council agenda, meeting management, citizen engagement. And $203,000 for a records document management system and permanent records digitization project.
Any comments from council? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Resolution 2021-004. Councillor Reeve?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Plummer. Whereas the corporation, the City of Pembroke, approved the following applications under the Community Improvement Plan. David Minns, DeJardais Insurance, at 1316 Pembroke Street West, for $1,102.50. Finnegan's at 995 Pembroke Street East, for $2,500. Dwight Montgomery Lawyer, at 220 Pembroke Street East, for $529.97. The applicants must comply with grant guidelines and will have the lesser of 18 months, or until the COVID-19 Business Support Grant is discontinued, to complete the work and submit receipts in order to receive the grant. The total commitment to grant recipients is $4,132.47.
Any comments? All those in favor? Carried. Thank you. Resolution 2021-005. Councillor Jackano?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, and seconded by the deputy mayor, Ron Girvey. Be it resolved that the council, the corporation, the City of Pembroke hereby approves the application for funding under the municipal modernization program known as Intake II Implementation Stream for Common Notification Systems, implementation of a work order system, SCADA upgrades, including the purchase of necessary hardware, fleet and patrol methodology review, and applicable software, and implementation of GPS software for fleet activity tracking. And awaiting your signature.
Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Resolution 2021-006. Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Reeve. Whereas the Municipal Freedom of Information and Protection of Privacy Act, RSO 1990, otherwise known as AMPIPA, dates back 30 years, and whereas municipalities, including the City of Pembroke, practise and continue to promote open and transparent government operations, actively disseminating information and routinely disclosing public documents upon request outside of the AMPIPA process, and whereas Regulation 823 under AMPIPA continues to reference antiquated technology and does not adequately provide for cost recovery, and these financial shortfalls are borne by the municipal taxpayer, and whereas reform is needed to address societal and technological changes in addition to global privacy concerns and consistency across provincial legislation, and whereas scalability of fees should be designed to ensure taxpayers are protected from persons abusing the access to information process, now therefore be it resolved that the Ministry of Government and Consumer Services be requested to review the AMPIPA and consider changes with input of Ontario municipalities, and further be it resolved that this resolution be forwarded to the Honourable Lisa Thompson, Minister of Government and Consumer Services, MPP John Jakobusky, Rensfield Nipsey, Pembroke, and the Association of Municipalities of Ontario.
Thank you. Any comments? Seeing none, all those in favor? Carried. Now, in regards to motion E, councillor Abdallah was to bring forward a motion regarding adding a waterfront development plan component to the currently planned Active Living Master Plan initiative. Given that the councillor is not present this evening, the motion will be heard at a future meeting. But in the interim, I am suggesting to council that staff be directed to report on the planned motion in order to allow council members to make an informed decision. So unless members of council have any concerns with this approach, we will simply consider it as direction. Comments? Thank you. Mayor's report? I believe everyone is aware that Rensfield County has been awarded the 2022 Ontario Winter Games. The games will be held in county municipalities and Pembroke. They will be held the weekend of February 24th and the weekend of February, March 3rd, 2022. There will be 23 events taking place, and volunteers will be required to assist. The games will boost our local economy and create a lasting legacy for our communities by supporting local sports, recreation, and educational opportunities. Now, individuals interested in volunteering by chairing one of the subcommittees that are going to be organized, or being a volunteer subcommittee member, please send an email to info@renfieldcounty2022.ca. Now, as we receive the Winter Games 2022 information here within the city, we will be posting it on our website and also on social media. As we are coming up on the one-year mark of the province of Ontario's declared state of emergency due to COVID-19, I'd like to reflect on how far we have come, and also how important it is to remain vigilant. Over the past year, we've seen our community come together to protect those who are most vulnerable. We have seen our essential workers continue to serve their community while taking all necessary safety precautions. We have seen our residents follow the guidelines of the Rensfield County and District Health Unit. We have seen our teachers and students have an unprecedented, different school year. We have seen our local business community continually adapt. Most importantly, we have remained vigilant in the fight against COVID-19. We are fortunate in Pembroke to be in the green zone due to our low number of COVID-19 cases. In order to stay in this zone, we must physically distance with those outside our households, wear a mask when out in public, wash our hands, and stay home if we are sick. City of Pembroke offices and amenities are now open to the public with strict health and safety guidelines. Our staff can serve you in person, but if your inquiry can be resolved by email or telephone, we encourage you to contact us in that manner. I encourage everyone to support our local business community during this time, in person or online. Additionally, take a moment to enjoy one of the many parks and outdoor amenities in the City of Pembroke. I'd once again like to thank our frontline workers, our educators, and our local business community, who continue to do an excellent job adapting their operations and keeping our community safe. And I'd like to encourage everyone in our community to be patient with each other and yourselves during this very difficult time. And everyone, please stay safe. Are there any notices of motion? Councillor Updates? Deputy Mayor?
Thank you, your worship. One councillor update from myself, on behalf of myself and councillor Abdallah, is regarding the community watch. So, on February 13th, there was two excellent presentations made to those that, it was put out to everyone, those that wanted to zoom in. The first one was from, a presentation from Amanda Nielsen of Rito Addiction and Family Services regarding substance use and addiction. The second excellent talk was from our very own Cameron Montgomery regarding creating welcoming committees, communities, sorry. This past weekend was two additional talks. One was from Laura Julian regarding unconscious bias, and the second one was from Chayla Brecken, another one of our very own, regarding sympathy versus empathy. So, on behalf of the two of us, we would certainly like to put a shout out there to Algonquin College, the local immigration to Algonquin College, the local immigration partnership, and those individuals that came forward without any charge to the municipality to provide us with this excellent information as we move forward with the Community Watch program. Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Reeve.
Thank you, your worship. A few messages from RANFRU County District Health Unit. So Dr Robert Cushman, our medical officer of health, has been putting out YouTube messages, and the most recent being February 26. He's very concerned over the cases that are arising in the Empire area. And really the message is how one party that many individuals attended did result in a substantial increase in cases within the county. So we have to still remain vigilant, and just because we're in green zone, does that not, it doesn't mean that we can get together with large groups of people. So right now, of course, the vaccine is huge, and we all want to know what is happening in RANFRU County and District. So the second edition of the COVID-19 Vaccine News Brief has been issued today. Everyone can find that online at rcdhu.com. If you have difficulty looking for any of the COVID information, just in the search engine, type COVID, you will be able to read to your heart's content. So just a few highlights from today's release. Messageing will be shared from RANFRU County District COVID-19 Vaccine Communications Committee about who will be next to receive the vaccine through various multimedia channels. Again, this is the one place where you need to go to get your information. As the vaccine rollout continues to evolve, the communications committee will release all key information to the public through the weekly COVID-19 Vaccine News Brief and other multimedia channels. So they suggest don't be calling your family doctor, your pharmacies. Go to the health unit's website to get the most up-to-date information, and you will find out where to go next. So it's an important time. There is, there are five outstanding community tables involved in this. So each location within RANFRU County and District will have the expert advice of the medical professionals in knowing how we can get the vaccine to the people who are next on the list. So we're getting there. Hang in, stay positive.
Thank you. Councillor Jacknow.
Your worship, members of council. Through your worship to the Chair of Operations and the Mr Lewis and staff, I just want to send out a big kudos to those guys for the excellent job that was done in cleaning the downtown area, the side streets, et cetera. We have had a tremendous amount of snow, and I know that many seniors find it difficult to access the snowbanks. When it's difficult, I'm a senior myself, a few of us around the table are seniors. So good job, and I know we can't be doing it every second weekend because of budgets, et cetera. But I'd like the public to know that you did a wonderful job. Thanks.
Any other comments? Seeing none, we'll be moving into closed session. Deputy Mayor.
Thank you, your worship. Moved by myself, seconded by councillor Jacknow. Let this meeting become a closed meeting to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor-client privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose.
All those in favour? Carried. We'll now move into closed session. Thank you, everyone.
A Council and Caucus meeting was also held earlier, I'm sorry. A caucus meeting was held earlier to discuss advice that is subject to solicitor Crown's privilege, including communications necessary for that purpose. There were no peculiar interests declared, and so there is nothing to report from the meeting. Could I have a motion to adjourn please? Move by. Oh, I'm sorry. The confirming motion, Counselor Lefrenier.
Moved by myself, seconded by Counselor Jacknow. The bylaw 05/2021 to confirm the proceedings of the regular meeting of council of March 2, 2021 be adopted and passed, and further that the said bylaw be signed by the mayor and clerk and sealed with the seal of the corporation.
Thank you all in favor. Carried. Could I have a motion to adjourn please? Moved by. Counselor Eathy, seconded by Counselor Plummer. All those in favor. Carried. Thank you very much, and good night everyone. Take care.
Good night, everyone. Stay safe.
Night.